Okay, it's four thirty and I'll call this fourth session of the Greenville City Council to order. Let the record reflect it is four thirty, I think I need to say that. And the first item and the only item to be discussed in this session is the fiscal twenty-five, twenty-six proposed budget summary.
Yeah, thank you Mayor. As you guys know, you guys have been working, actually everybody's been working on this budget since February, so you've seen all the departmental presentations. We've gone through all those, that's been requested, what's been proposed for you guys. And then we did a little bit of back and forth last meeting. And so just for you guys today, we have a few updated numbers. I will tell you, I did, we were going through all the, especially the CIP. And so on the Spillman side, I discovered that the maintenance part and the subscription fees were already in the IT budget. And so I took that out. So you'll see, you'll notice the Spillman virtual, that's just the one-time hardware costs for this year, so that's why the one seventy-one changed from a two fifty-nine. So you'll see that, that's the major, the biggest change there. There was a few minor changes. Brett was looking through his parks, he already had that lease payment for the real unit built-in, so I took that out and just left it in CIP here. So there's just a few minor changes like that, that were discovered. So what you have before you is the target fund balance at sixteen percent over there, and so you'll see that green box to the over/under target, so you've still got about two forty-four there. With all the items that are on the right-hand side are still in that, in that budget and in those numbers. So if you guys want to make any changes to that, then you're more than welcome to, so.
Yes, I'd like to recommend a couple changes. And this may not be very popular, but on the total tax rate, I'd like to raise that one cent to fifty point five six eight. And I would like to include the street paver and the fire station generators. And if my math is correct on here, that should get us to an over/under with an overage of twenty-five thousand eight seventeen.
You're leaving the fund balance the same?
Yes. Correct. The street paver.
That's fine with me. I think, my feeling is, is that we're holding these funds, they belong to citizens and we can be doing some of these projects at today's prices. So I think I like those suggestions. Raising the tax rate one cent still keeps us two hundred, or two cents under the no-new-revenue rate, I believe, so we're still...
Three cents, roughly, close.
Three cents under, still three, yeah, okay, three cents, yeah, it was almost four, wasn't it?
Three and change, now it's two and change. So stated again, you'd like to add two items and raise the tax rate to fifty-six eight.
Correct.
With the general fund balance being the same, and if you do that, I haven't put the numbers in, but we still have twenty-five thousand dollars in the fund balance, did you say, is that what you said?
Yes, you're over your targeted fund balance by twenty-five thousand.
Okay.
Which should leave a little bit of money to get some paint for the library. Some paint for the walls in the library. Yeah.
Got the library furniture in there.
Yeah, I think it needs...
We've already got the paint and everything already in.
Okay.
We've already had that in there.
All right.
The only thing we didn't put in was the library flooring, because we were planning on doing that in twenty-seven. So we were going to try to do everything in painting, everything done this year, and then do the flooring next year.
Okay.
That was the, when I talked with this facility, that was our plan.
Awesome.
Library floor is quite large, so there's a lot to be addressed to that. And the fire station generators are at half the cost.
All right, you want to explain that to everybody if they don't know?
Yeah, so certainly, so the generators, the entire quote's four ninety-nine, and why we split it in half is Chief Powell came to me after the last meeting and was willing to submit and use TIFMS funds to fund half of that, because he'd like to get this project done. We've had it on the CIP for, I think through, well, I think this might be the third year, if I can remember correctly. But we've been looking at it for a while. And then the first quote, we had some money in the budget last year, but the quote came way too high. And so we re-quoted it out with Waukesha Pearson, they came back at four ninety-nine. They came and looked at everything, so this is a very valid quote, and so he would like to fund half of it with the TIFMS fund. So if you remember, he gets, he gets money when we send equipment down, when we also get, send our deployments down, so we've got, he's got a little bit of funds in there that, you know, it, obviously it's up to you guys as council what you like to do with that funds, but our philosophy is that we put that back into the fire department. So, you know, things like the Rescue Four we purchased with the TIFMS funds and things like that, that don't have to hit the general fund, but they're all, they're taken out of, so whatever equipment, whatever funds we make off of that equipment, that's what we put back into equipment, so that's our philosophy at this point. Obviously, that's y'all's decision, but that's how we put that back into there, and then it doesn't come out of taxpayer money. So he's willing to fund half of that to be able to, and use some of those funds to be able to do that, and that should take that fund, it should take that fund pretty close down to not much left. And I don't know if we've had a lot of deployments this budget year, as much as we've had in the past, so...
Yeah, we still have some, some deployments that should be paid back.
Yeah, 'cause...
This year hasn't been super busy, but we do still have some outstanding deployments.
Yeah, and that takes, gosh, it takes a while to get the funding back, it take, because you have to report it, I mean, it takes a couple of months to get your funding, sometimes even six months, I wouldn't say. It's a big delay, yeah.
If we go out of state, that can take up a year to get fully reimbursed.
Yeah.
But we do have a healthy balance in there right now. We will be coming back to y'all with some other projects for that fund coming up, so that's why we're comfortable in a split on this.
So...
Do you have any other comments?
I do not, no.
Any other questions or comments from the council, if you're okay with this suggestion?
And we will, if you guys are comfortable with this, you will vote on it this meeting, or it's on the agenda to vote on, that's correct.
Do you have a question?
No, not yet.
Well, I was going to ask, and in the agenda, these, these numbers, will those have to be revised as a handout sheet to people for the agenda for this meeting, or they can still?
They can still sit, because you... Correct, as long as you don't go over the no-new revenue rate, then you're perfectly fine, as far as postings or anything like that. Because you guys are below the no-new revenue rate, you are not required to, you're actually not even required to have like a posting or a hearing or anything like it, because you're under the no-new revenue rate, so...
But they appear in the agenda.
That's correct, and that's what was proposed.
And the number that is in the agenda is going, has changed by one cent.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, but we don't have to repost anything or anything, as long as it stays under that no-new revenue rate. Because Mayor, if you'll look at that bottom line...
Okay.
As long as you don't, that bottom box on the agenda, as long as you don't go over that, that's correct.
Okay.
Yep, that's correct, so we don't have to repost anything. Yep, you are correct.
But those numbers, for example, the sixty-eight, or the sixty-three dollars and whatever it is, three cents, sixty-eight dollars and three cents that's mentioned in that is not, doesn't need to be restated in this meeting?
I'll verify with Daniel Ray before we vote on it, but yes, I will verify with him if that needs to actually be restated.
Okay.
Yes, I will verify with him.
Thank you.
Yep, because that, actually, that's, that that you see in the agenda is a new, that's as of September first, so we're...
I know.
Eight days in. So, yes. But I'll verify with Daniel before we vote, so if we need to say something different, then we certainly can.
Okay. And in adopting, I have questions about the, if we can move forward to the regular agenda. There's some exact language that is, has to be used in adopting, ratifying and adopting these various ordinances. Does Daniel have that, so it can be available to...
I believe so. I'll verify with him. Whoever makes the motion, yes.
Okay.
Yep, and I think that'll include with the tax rate, so we'll get that, we'll get that verified to make sure the language is correct.
Okay. Okay, is there anything else? If not, we'll, I guess, go into executive session.
Okay.
So we will go into executive session under paragraph, sorry, section five-five-one-point-oh-seven-one, paragraphs one and two, and we'll be back at six o'clock. section 551.07, one paragraphs one and two, and we'll be back at six o'clock.
Tim.
I'll call this special regular session meeting in Greenville City Council order, let the record reflect, it's about six oh nine. I'll ask you to stand for the invocation by Michael McBay, our community development director. Please stand.
Will you join me in prayer? Our Father, as we come before you tonight to conduct the business of this city, we ask for your wisdom, we ask for your guidance. We ask that you would continue to watch over our citizens here in Greenville, and you continue to pour your love and your peace on us as we follow your guidance and your teachings. Thank you for our time tonight. We ask that you would bless us, in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Michael. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. You want to do this?
They need your son first, right? Yeah? Gotta make it official.
Gotta make it official.
Okay, we have two proclamations tonight, and the first one is for Patriot's Day. I'd like to ask Frank Stephens to come forward to accept this proclamation. And of course, this addresses 9/11, which happened many years ago, 25 years ago, I guess, or so, almost. Frank, why don't you tell us what you were doing on 9/11? Do you remember?
Yeah, I was actually out of the military then, but I was at work when everything hit. Signed back up for the National Guard then.
Be joined in the military after that?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I have this proclamation for Patriot Day, which is, of course, September 11, 2001. Whereas on September 11, 2001, terrorists attacked our county, causing immense damage and tragic loss of nearly 3,000 lives in Washington DC, New York, and Pennsylvania. Whereas Americans have always been united in our resolve to protect our freedom, whereas throughout our history, Americans have shown the world that we are a nation of people who overcome any act of terrorism and vanquish any foe who may threaten our cherished way of life. Whereas the United States of America stands as a symbol of freedom, a defender of democracy throughout the world, and the compassion that rose through the hearts and minds of the American people still serves as the ultimate rebuke to the evil of those who attacked us on that day. Now therefore, we hereby proclaim September 11, 2025, as Patriot Day, and National Day of Remembrance to honor the innocent victims of those who perished as a result of the terrorist attacks on September 11, 2001. Thank you for being here tonight and sharing your story, and here's the proclamation for you. I'll give you more to take. I'm not sure. Thank you for being here tonight. It really is an opportunity to honor those who honored us with our service, which is thank you very much. I have now a proclamation for Wesley United Methodist Church, their 775th anniversary. Is someone here to accept that proclamation? Or you tonight? Good?
Brian Bosworth.
Yes, introduce yourself to the audience.
I'm Brian Bosworth, I'm the senior pastor at Wesley United Methodist Church, and just hate to correct you, Mayor, but it's only 175, not 775.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'd love for it to be, but we're not quite that old yet.
Okay, well, thank you. I need to be corrected frequently, so thank you very much. I'll take that. It's interesting, I mean, this church has been in existence since before the Civil War.
Absolutely.
It's hard for us to put things in perspective sometimes, but it really has been, you know?
Yes, sir.
When you think about it, think all the things that have happened since that time. So I'll read the proclamation. Whereas after meeting informally with circuit-riding preachers for three years under the historic Twin Oaks, north of downtown Greenville, Wesley United Episcopal Church South was officially organized in 1850, making it the oldest continuously-serving church in the Greenville community. And whereas after 175 years, the people of Wesley have faithfully proclaimed the gospel of Jesus Christ as Lord and Savior, making disciples and transforming lives in our community. And whereas United Methodist Church has continually supported, as well as provided collaborative leadership for numerous city and community events, activities, and outreach initiatives, whereas Wesley United Methodist Church remains dedicated to making a lasting difference in the lives of individuals in the Greenville and Hunt County. Now therefore, I, J.R. Ransome, Mayor, do hereby proclaim September 21st of 2025 as the 175th, 175th anniversary of Wesley United Methodist Church. Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor.
You bet. Thank you very much. Thank you for being here.
Well, just on behalf of the church members and the folks that come through our doors that we serve, we're just delighted and honored to be partners in providing service to the community and providing leadership to the community and all the things that come in between. Thank you, Mayor.
And you do a lot for our community. Detective for the homeless recently, sure do. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, again, I will call your attention to placeholders in the agenda, citizens to be heard in public testimony, citizens to be heard on items that are not already scheduled for public testimony are on the, are in the agenda is for citizens to be heard, and public testimony tonight is for ordinances which start with, we have no ordinances, with resolutions that start with item 8A. If you'd like to address the city council on any of these issues, please present a citizen's comment card to the city secretary. And I will say there are three public hearings tonight regarding the budget, the tax rate, ratification of the tax rate, et cetera. So are there citizens tonight? There being none? Then we'll move to item 8A, which is public hearing and ordinance adoption. Hold a public hearing on the City of Greenville 2025-25-2026 proposed budget and consideration in action of an ordinance to adopt a budget and fee schedule for changes for the ensuing fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2025, and ending September 30, 2026, in accordance with the City of Greenville Charter, appropriating the various amounts thereof, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinance in conflict therewith, providing for public hearings, providing for publication of this ordinance, and providing an effective date. And I'll ask the city secretary to comment on that item for anything. I'm a city manager, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Yes, thank you, Mayor. As you recall, we've been doing budget hearings with all the departments since June for you guys, our staff has been working on this budget since February, going through all everything, and so we provided the city council a proposed budget on August 12th, which you guys have had a little less than a month to review. We went over the general fund last week, or last meeting, I apologize, and then, so during the work session at 4:30, we continued those discussions, and you guys came up with a proposed budget that you would like to see, and also a tax rate. So this one is going to be for the, just a public hearing for the budget and the fee schedule. The fee schedule was also in your packet as well. The major fees that were changed were the water and wastewater, which are a continuation of what we've been planning for the past couple of years with the infrastructure. And then there was some GMA fees, park fees, obviously with the new rec centers opening, or Reese Davis reopening, and then the new sports park center, there was some fees that we instituted there, so you'll see some new fees in those fee schedules. Other than that, those were the major fees that were changed within this budget to reflect those changes. And then, anything else, you can see the tax impact statement, that is, that's something that's new that you guys haven't seen this year, that was required by the legislation as of September 1, so as of eight days ago, that became effective, so that's why you see that in the packet this year. But other than that, I'll be happy to answer any questions in regards to the budget or anything additional that we discussed during the work session.
Is there anything before open the public hearing? There is not, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone like to speak in favor of this proposed budget? Is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition to this budget, proposed budget? If not, I'll close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the council regarding adoption of the budget?
I move that the property tax rate be set at...
No, no.
Nope. This is budget, this is budget only.
Okay.
Yeah, this is budget only.
I think I move that we approve the budget.
There you go. There we go. Do you have to?
Please vote.
To vote.
And item 6A passes unanimously, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Item 6B, consideration in action on the ordinance of the city council, the City of Greenville, Texas authorizing ratification of the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget that raises more property taxes than fiscal year 24-25 budget.
Yes, Mayor, this is, also, you guys discussed the tax rate during the work session, and so this will just ratify that tax rate to go with the budget that you guys just approved. Item C will actually adopt that tax rate.
Yes.
So that tax rate that you guys agreed to, give me one second, was .568, yes, sorry. There it is. Yep, .568, which would change the maintenance and operations .98046, and obviously the INS rate stays the same at .269954.
And so is there any comment from, any questions or comment from members of the city council? Not all the public hearings, anyone like to speak in favor of ratifying this tax rate? Anyone like to speak in opposition? If not, I'll close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the council regarding this item, 6B?
Make a motion to approve?
Please vote, please for a second.
I'll second.
Okay, and that passes unanimously. Item 6C, public hearing and ordinance adoption. Hold a public hearing on the proposed tax rate and consideration in action of an ordinance authorizing the adaption of the 2025 tax rate for fiscal year 2025-2026 that will not exceed the lower of the voter-approved tax rate or the no-new revenue rate and provide for a record vote, so.
So this is actually voting for the tax rate?
Yes, so we're adopting the tax rate.
You're adopting it, that's correct.
Okay. Any questions? If not, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone like to speak in favor of adopting the proposed tax rate? Would anyone like to speak in opposition to us adopting the proposed tax rate? If not, I'll close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the council regarding this item?
I move that the property tax rate be set at .568 per hundred dollar of assessed valuation for the 2025 fiscal year.
For a second.
A second.
Please vote. Okay, and that completes these items. I'd like to say, really on behalf of the city council, I want to thank the city manager and her staff for a successful budget process. This process started really in February, which is, I don't know, probably six months ago, with the goals for the, when we established these goals for the coming year. That followed with departmental briefings where department heads would present a lot of the things that they do, and their equipment item, or services, or supplies, or that sort of thing. It was always interesting to me because it reminded us of all the services and all the different things that these departments do, the library, parks and rec, all the different programs they have, it reminds us of that, and all the other functions that we provide. Those items are then considered by the city manager, and they're subsequently adopted and considered by the city council, and this marks the third year, the third consecutive year, that we've adopted a tax rate that is equal to or less than the no-new revenue rate. And the no-new revenue, no-new revenue rate means that if your appraisal is the same, the tax would be, your tax would be equivalent to the paid year-over-year. I think this is important to focus on, is this council has a history, and this is the third year that we've adopted the no, something under the no-new revenue rate or equal to the no-new revenue rate, that we are focused on holding the line on taxes, and so I just want to compliment and congratulate the city manager and her staff for a job well done. You did a great job for us, and one of the things I want to mention is I don't, Mr. Evans is here tonight, but I don't remember a single instance when any citizen came and spoke at any of those meetings, and I don't know if you want to make a cameo appearance, James, I just thought of bringing that up. We are a growing city, and growth consumes cash, like any city in East Texas, we have a lot of infrastructure that we need to work on, so it's always challenging to, you know, balance those two things, growth and infrastructure improvements. And there's, I want to mention one other thing, there's been a series of articles about infrastructure in the Dallas Morning News, and today, there was an article that focused on water, and how far behind every city in the state is, and the state is regarding water. And I want to assure our citizens that that is one thing that we're out in front of. We're, we've replaced the water, we'll replace the raw water line from Tewocanae to our treatment plant, where we've acquired land to build a new treatment plant, wasted, expand our wastewater treatment plant, and do some other things in the industrial area, as well as improving ways we handle water outages and that sort of thing downtown. So we do have plenty of water at this time, so what we're doing, we're way out front of a lot of cities in Texas, and this is going to cost Texans billions and billions and billions of dollars to fix this problem. It's something, water is something that I think gets ignored, it's not like a pothole, when you hit a pothole and you say, well, I can call the city manager and get it fixed. We don't know when these pipes are gonna, what's gonna happen to them. So I'm very proud of what we're doing there, and I want to assure our citizens that we are trying to address these, and within a year or two, we'll be in really good shape with our water for the next maybe 30 or 40 years, so I wanted to say that. Having... So now I'll move to, thank you, I'll move to resolutions, item 8A, which is consideration in action, consideration in action of a resolution authorizing a change order number 10 with AP Gulf states in the amount of $447,000.
Mayor, council, good evening. So the bulk of these, of this change order will be dealing with parking lot lights in the new parking lot, that's going to be east of the existing parking lot back in the back by the basketball courts. Somehow we just missed getting lights in there in the original plan set, so this would be adding those. The other large, kind of large-ticket item on here is going to be fitness deck on the center. The flooring, there was an incident in Allen, which ours is constructed very similarly, or designed very similarly, where some weights went out there and they broke the floor, and so making this change would basically ensure that that did not happen to us ever, so, and that comes in at about $40,000. So we're also adding IDF cabinet for servers over at Reese Davis, and then we got some interior finishes, and then we have a credit that came back from moving our camera and door system to cloud-based as opposed to storing servers, so I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? So I will just ask, is there any public testimony tonight? Okay, so if there are no questions for... Brett, we'll ask, what is the, the city council like today? Is there a motion regarding this item?
I would just hope that they would monitor the amount of weight that gets put out on the deck, so that doesn't happen properly. Make a motion to approve.
Yes, we'll be, we'll be checking that, for sure.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. Item 8B, consideration in action on a resolution authorizing the City of Greenville to enter into an agreement with Gardner Jones LLC to provide concessions and alcohol sales for events at the Greenville Municipal Auditorium. Micah?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council. So just a really quick background on kind of how we got here. When I got here three years ago, concessions were sort of randomly popping up when we had shows, there was no real plan for that, and alcohol was left to the renter. So for instance, the Marty Stewart Show, which is going to be our first show, not counting the grand opening, the way we were, when I got here, the way it was, is that renter would have had to provide the alcohol sales. So most promoters, they don't have time for that, it's not something they want to do, and I figured that out really quickly. And we had patrons coming to us saying, why, you know, I'm here to see a country artist or a... or a rock show or whatever it is, why can't I get a beer or a glass of wine? So I reached out to several area restaurants and tried to find somebody that would be willing to come in, and the Ashen Rose, which is owned by Gardner Jones LLC, stepped in and they started to come in and provide alcohol for our shows on a periodic basis when that made sense. Our concessions were handled by nonprofit groups. So in our, when we closed, I talked to my staff and we started looking at, how can we make this a little more professional? How can we raise the bar for the GMA in line with what we're doing upstairs? And we looked at doing it internally and handling it through the city, which would have meant a TAVC license, which is a lot of headache, and that may be something that the GMA reaches one day, but we don't feel like that's something, that's a place that we're at yet, where we would want to go through all of that trouble of hiring staff and doing everything that we'd have to do to sell alcohol and concessions in-house. So what we're proposing is that we enter into an arrangement with Gardner Jones LLC and that they would come in and provide concessions and alcohol for our events, with the only real exceptions for alcohol sales being events that are focused more on kids, like a dance recital, or Greenville Christian School does their Christmas program here every year. So those sorts of events where alcohol doesn't make sense, but most of our shows, even things like the Greenville Pops Orchestra, or, you know, when we have the country shows, or even the community theater plays, any of those sorts of things, people enjoy having that when they come out to a show. So what this does is, it allows us to provide the space, and then they will do everything else. They'll handle all of the inventory, they'll handle all of the sales, and our, what we're proposing in this is that we will eventually, this will become a rental space for them, and so we would charge them a rental fee. What we don't have right now is any sort of data to work with. I have no idea how much in sales that we're going to do, especially once we reopen and we start to add more shows to the schedule. So what's in the contract is that for the first six months, they would come in, they would sell, we would collect all of that data, and then at the six-month mark, we would negotiate a rental rate with them, and then negotiate that again at the one-year mark, and then the plan would be to do that annually with Gardner Jones or whoever we were to bid this out to in the future.
Thank you, Micah. I'll study, I've got one more thing for you after we vote.
Sure.
Well, this is, you want to talk about the exclusivity issue in the contract? Basically, the way that this is set up, there's been some questions about exclusivity, but basically, this doesn't require that group to be the exclusive vendor of alcohol, but the way that it's written does require them, does give them authority to be the overall decision-maker on whether anybody else can sell other concessions. And so if you want to take that exclusivity out, you just remove that item 6C, which is the sentence that says that. But that's, that was part of their negotiation process.
Yes, and Mr. Jones is here tonight, if you had any questions for him directly.
Okay. So I don't know if you want to discuss that particular part of it.
Yeah, I just, in my interpretation, I thought it would be best if both of those requirements read the same in the agreement. That way, the city maintains control of the sales or who's selling. Now, we're not trying to slight the vendor in any way, and they, of course, would have priority, but if there was for some reason that they couldn't sell or that we deemed that it would not be appropriate, we should be the ones to have the say and not leave it to the vendor to decide who gets.
So if I understand you correctly, you're saying we would remove the exclusivity clause from the concessions as it, so that it would read the same way as the alcohol clause does?
Correct.
Okay.
But with the intent that they get priority, and if they don't want to do it, then the city can get some other vendor to do it, but without having to get permission from them to let somebody else serve?
Correct.
Okay.
Would that just be giving them first right of refusal?
Basically. I think that's what you're saying, right? First right of refusal.
Yes.
And you're, are you good with that? Okay, so you can, anybody who wants to, can make a motion to approve it, subject to that change, the change that was discussed, and then we can write that in in the final version before sending it back over.
Probably going to butcher this, but I'll make the motion that we approve with the discussed changes allowing first right of refusal to the vendor, but maintaining our ability to provide a secondary vendor if the first vendor does not wish to. Is that?
That's good. That's in, what you're talking about is to change to section 3C.
Correct. Change to section 3C.
Second. There's a motion, a second, please. And that item passes unanimously. Consent calendar, I'd like to ask the city secretary to read the consent calendar, please.
City Council meeting minutes, August 26. Resolution approving a renewal of a contract for client service agreement with McGriff, Amarch, and McLennan Agency, and a resolution authorizing payment to Tyler Technologies for the purchase of InCode annual software support.
Any questions regarding any of these items? If not, what is the pleasure of the council regarding the consent calendar?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
And the consent calendar passes unanimously. City staff, city council reports, the Walworth Harrison Library Infrastructure Facility Improvements Grant. Is John here to talk about that?
Yes, Mayor and City Council, I have the opportunity to really share with you that we received a grant from the Texas Library Archive Commission, which is also a federal grant, which will be for library infrastructure improvements for the library of $11,490, I think it's $499, it was received from that. That grant will have, we didn't get the contract in time, but it'll be back on the 23rd, so we can get, sort of summer for you guys to approve with the contract for that. It is a reimbursement grant, 100% reimbursement grant as well, but it's for, it'll be for a, another double, it'll be for a double shush booth, as it will be for, for those who have telemedicine, and also, we have a lot of people who have CPS to come there, and it's a good privacy place for both, it'll be for two people to be in there, and so they can visit privacy, and we'll be in the back of the library. I already have a spot for it already, and so it's just going to be more of a privacy place and another study room case, but it'd be something, it'll be locked, and it will only be used when it's necessary for people to use it. So we're just thankful for that grant, and it's just want to let you know that we're just thankful for the opportunity to have that grant, and we'll be coming back on the 23rd to ask for the approval for the contract. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay, item 11, City Council discussion of proposed agenda items. Are there any proposed agenda items that the council would like to bring forward in There are none. Item 12, Board and Commission minutes, there are no minutes before you tonight. So we'll be going back into executive session under 551.071, paragraphs one and two, and we do anticipate a vote coming out of that executive session. Thank you for being here tonight, and hope to see you next time. Thank you for being here tonight and hope to see you next time.